Into the AVP decathlon again this year. And then regarding another student led club, we have International Club, which is led by our very own show choir senior Benedict Le. This year they're trying to plan a new, a community wide, like district wide international fair, which is going to happen in April. Assuming that those plans follow through, I think they'll be asking like a lot of people in the community to come, so it's going to be a really cool event.
So show choir, what we all came from, our practice was four thirty to nine today. They are currently running solo auditions for our competition show. We are in full preparation for our season to start on January twelfth with our home invitational. We will have seventeen groups, it's January fourteenth, my bad. We will have seventeen groups from the Midwest coming to compete in single gender divisions, so like all girls or all boys. There is a small mixed group division, a large mixed group division, and a middle school division that will happen the Friday before the Saturday that the competition is on. After that, we will compete at six other competitions across Ohio and Indiana with our competition show that is French Revolution themed this year. And then we will have a finale in May. Thank you guys for the invite.
Thank you for taking the time to come. We appreciate that. I'm sorry.
No, you're good. I was just gonna say you guys, for the first time, set the bar really, really high. So I feel really sorry for the next group. Appreciate you guys. You guys have no fear being in front of people because we got to watch this past weekend. It was awesome. So thanks for all you guys do. You're great representatives of our district.
Thank you.
Thanks. All right, our next one under item B is retirement recognition. Again, these are always bittersweet, so I'm gonna turn them over, turn this over to Mr. Darren Schwederman.
Thank you, Mr. Otten, Mrs. Kitzman, our board. It's nice to see you this evening. We have one retirement recognition tonight, and at this time, I'd like to invite Mrs. Dawn Kavinsky. Would you please come forward, Dawn? Dawn has served our school district and the student nutrition department, and I've had the opportunity to know Dawn outside of school a little bit. I've sat for several years behind her at the University of Dayton Arena at the basketball games. And this is a bitter, it is, like Mr. Otten said, it's a bittersweet event here, your retirement today, Dawn. I do want to take a few minutes, Dawn, and let you know that when the board accepts the resignation for the purpose of retirement, one of the things that we do is we have a resolution that it's adopted by the board. And so in our board meeting that was held in October, you had submitted your letter of resignation. We know that this is your last official month of work, if you will, here in December. And so I would like to take a moment and read that resolution to you, okay? So whereas the Beaver Creek Board of Education has received the notification of retirement for Dawn Kavinsky, and whereas the board wishes to publicly recognize Mrs. Kavinsky and for her outstanding contribution during her twenty-six years of dedicated service to our schools and community, and where through her efforts, the quality support rendered to the district's students, staff, administrators, and the performance of our school's missions has been greatly enhanced. And whereas Mrs. Kavinsky leaves an outstanding professional and personal record, which will serve as an exemplary model for the rest of us to follow, and whereas her presence, influence, and contribution have helped to make our schools a better place, therefore be it resolved that the Beaver Creek Board of Education does hereby accept with regret the retirement resignation of Dawn Kavinsky, and does publicly express to her its sincere appreciation for her outstanding career in our schools, and wish her health, happiness, and a long, contented retirement. And we have a copy of that resolution for you this evening, Dawn. We also like to present to you with a plaque, and then I'd like to invite Mr. Ashley to come up and say a few words as well. Oh, and there's a card, but most importantly, inside the card, there's an activity pass. It invites you to come back to any of the events here in the district free of charge. For your service, we do appreciate all the work that you've done for our students. Congratulations. All right. Dawn, I've had the distinct pleasure of getting to work with you for a little over five years. Right away, I realized that I had someone special I was going to get to work with. Expert, dedicated, empathetic, selfless friend are words that stand out to me when I think of who you are as a person. Your knowledge level and expertise in all aspects is truly second to none. You always impressed me with how on top of everything you always were, and it inspires me and others to do better. I both recognize and appreciate how dedicated you are in everything that you do, to the student nutrition department, to Beaver Creek City Schools, to your family, and to your Only those that truly know you fully understand the level of dedication you bring to the table. From upset or frustrated parents to angry coworkers and everything in between, you've always had this unique ability to be empathetic and also informative to bring the emotions down. Time after time, I saw how you handled those types of situations, and I started to take, I started to take what I've learned from you to grow myself, and I bet others have too. The definition of selfless is concerned more with the needs and wishes of others than with one's own. Your picture should be attached to that definition. Not only is this abundantly clear to me and the rest of the department in your work, but at home too. At a moment's notice, on a, excuse me, at a moment's notice, and for many years, on two separate occasions, you dropped everything for your grandkids. Everything that you do for your mom, from hospital trips to laundry to shopping, or just to spend time with her. All these things you do for Bill, and Jamie, and Yvonne, and the other kids, and your friends, it's just impressive. So friend, I will miss our morning talks. I will miss our random conversations, especially the ones about our overseas experience and how much we enjoyed those. I would, I will never forget how you supported me and were there for me through the most difficult time in my life. But I will continue to look forward to seeing you at UD Games, catching up at lunch from time to time. So enjoy your much deserved retirement. Don't be a stranger, my friend.
I'll make this brief. I just want to thank you for allowing me to work in Beaver Creek City Schools all these years. I've worked with some tremendous, hardworking people in student nutrition and throughout the district. People really care about the families and the students. If you ever doubt that at all, somebody would walk into your office and they need help, and you're able to provide that, and when they leave, you realize why you're there. Because we all care. We truly care about this, the families and these students. So I will miss that part. I'll miss all the people that I work with, but they're in good hands. And you'll be fine. So Merry Christmas, and I will see Darren at the UD Games. If I don't know where he's at, I can probably hear him. Josh is just right across the way at the Games too, so I'll still see everybody. But I appreciate everything. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much for what you've done for Beaver Creek.
Thank you, Dawn. Okay, our next presentation is our 2024 Program of Studies, and that is Dr. Bobby Fiore.
Hello. Today you should have received an email from me, and it includes the Program of Studies with track changes and highlights, just because I wanted to make sure you knew exactly what had changed, so you could focus in on that, because it's a long document. So I would have appreciated that. So you can read it all, or you can read all the new stuff, but I wanted to provide you with an update on the changes tonight. This year is science courses study. So last year we did ELA, the year before math. Each year it's a different course of study that we go through with teachers. So this year, our focus being science, we had to talk through what those courses would look like. So there are some changes there for high school. But then the rest of the departments look at their document, and they decide, you know, are there things that we need to better explain in terms of courses, the descriptions, fee changes? We propose those. We don't know for sure. Those are always approved in the summer. So for middle school, some of the changes, we updated just really some of the current date staffing and strategic plan changes, meaning vision, mission, the values. Minor fee changes, really that was social studies. There was a four dollar increase due to the map cost and Studies Weekly price change. Everything's going up. Also, there was some minor language changes to course descriptions, and that was really just improved clarity from feedback we heard. So didn't change the course, just maybe explained it a little better. We updated the course name from design thinking to design modeling, because at the, last year, we decided to, because of, the Career Center is now using the Design Thinking Lab and offering design modeling, so the Career Center has taken over that course. So it's just a little slight difference in the name. And then we updated CCP information, because every year we do that for VHS, and as you know, kids can take CCP from seventh grade on. So middle school doesn't change a lot. There isn't a lot of flexibility with courses like there is in high school, so not major changes, so that one will be an easier read than the next one, so. High school. So of course, we updated staffing information, which I can tell you, well, sometimes that changes and we have to update it again. We did remove information because it was applicable prior to graduating classes, because there for a while, we had these kids, this would apply, and then these kids, this would apply. So we're finally out of that, as well as the vowel-sound language, because next year is the first year that we will not have the vowel-sound. So that information has been removed from the program of study. We also updated the credit flexibility application process, just so that the students were aware of what they needed to do for that. Biomedical sciences, last year when I did this presentation, I talked about medical detectives. It was added to middle school, and that is a pre-class, like an introductory class to the biomedical engineering pathway that was coming this year. So it is here. So that's exciting. We will be offering Principles of Biomedical Science, you'll see that in there, Human Body Systems, and Medical Interventions. And then twenty-five, twenty-six, the fourth class will come, which is Biomedical Innovation. So that pathway has been added, and that is through our Career Center and Project Lead the Way. So it will be their staff. That's very exciting. Through the science, through the courses study, we also looked at Science Selective, so we're adding zoology as a new Science Selective, which I think is exciting. That is going to encompass the study of animals, that includes characteristics and classification, growth and development. You'll see it in there, comparative anatomy, and the ecological importance and threats to all major groups. So that's exciting. We updated the CCP dates, which we do every year. CCP classes for science will not be offered this next year. We, Honors Physics is now going to be named AP Physics One, and Astronomy will not be offered next year, because we're going to look at how we can redesign that course, if possible. So it's not gone, it's just not going to be offered while we think about the best way to teach that. So those are some changes, and then we have just a few more. We are changing scholarship science courses to honors, so those are pretty typical, anatomy and physiology, physical science and biology. Our three D, three D two will now be named ceramics and sculpture. We removed scholarship accounting two. We just weren't getting the kids that would enroll in that. And we removed discrete math and computer science. There are four alternatives to algebra. We had offered three of them, and we had not offered one. You don't have to offer, you don't have to offer but one of them, really. But, so discrete math just didn't get the amount of kids. Kids go to statistics and probability, and then the math models and reasoning. So that's the two courses that kids are enrolling in for the algebra two equivalencies. So we aren't going to offer the discrete math and computer science moving forward. We also, because we started the pathways last year for education principles and business, we have to add more classes. So our education pathway, you saw the kids talk up here. This year, we had education principles. Next year, we'll have classroom management and curriculum and instruction, so two more classes. In business, we are going to have I, legal environments, I gotta get the exact technical name, or I'll tell you wrong, Legal Environments in Education, and the other ones leaving my mind, I'll tell you it later. Oh, it's up there. Oh, sorry, Management Principles. So those are the two. We tossed around changing those, but we ended up on the same ones we had. So we're going to have two more classes in business and two more classes in education, which is exciting, so. Something else that's not in here that may be coming, you know, it's never done, because it's a fast timeline. So as of tomorrow, we will be submitting a grant opportunity for Ohio. It's a, through the ODE, it's a Career Technical Education Equipment Grant, and we will find out if we get that in January twenty-sixth. But either way, we are looking to start a cybersecurity credential. And that credential will allow kids to pretty much leave here and get a job making around sixty thousand. So when we were looking at that credential, you can make it a pathway, a CTE pathway, or not. So when this grant opportunity came up, it was like, well, let's go for it, and we can make it a pathway as well. And then we can also add another one, Information Support and Services Pathway. They're both under information technology. When you look at the Ohio Top Jobs and, you know, what's needed, this is where the need is, and this is where our kids have a lot of interest. We've been doing these U-Sciences aptitude assessments. So we're very excited about that. We will, no matter what, be looking to bring back to you cybersecurity credential, but once we know whether we get that grant, we will maybe be bringing back additional courses. So what those courses would look like is information technology is the first class. That's what we'd offer next year. That's for both pathways, so it is in both. Then we would also be offering cybersecurity, and then the next, it would be computer hardware, computer software, and then programming, and then cybersecurity defense and reinforcement, cybersecurity testing and response. So that's kind of where it would go. Of course, it will, it starts with one class, then we add two more, then we add the other. But I think it'll be a great opportunity for our kids. So we should, we will know January twenty-sixth whether we get that grant, but either way, we'll be coming back with a provision for cybersecurity, so I just want to make sure you knew that. But it's just, what wall will it include at this point? So we'll keep you updated on that.
This is amazing for our kids.
Yeah. And it's a great opportunity for our kids. So those are the big changes, mostly in science, some course changes, the adding of the biomedical engineering, and then these, and the zoology class, and then these, this pathway coming. Do you have any questions?
Mike Schuman is going to be the guest speaker in the cybersecurity.
Mike Schuman, we are hoping we can, we would love to build a student help desk. That's one of our goals within this program, because as you know, with the CTE programs and pathways, you have to have two hundred and fifty hours of work-based experience, and it can be within the district. So like our kids, once they get, next year, start going into our elementaries for education to help, hopefully help out in some of our classrooms and gain knowledge. Same for this, and we have some really bright kids. They could be very helpful to some of our technology, hardware, and software problems, so.
You know, it never ceases to amaze me, the opportunities our kids are afforded because of all you administrators do. So I really want to thank you, because our kids are very fortunate. They really are. I wish I would have this one, but just kidding, really. Seriously, it's like...
I'm just curious how significant the grant is that we're going after this.
As of today, when we're calculating the budget? Beth Sizemore is a huge component of these grants. She is a, she's brilliant at them. So we work together on these, but, and Joy helped me make sure I got it in the right columns today, which was super helpful. I did say today, I might not ever want to be in the treasurer's world in there, just because I overthink it. I might fit in two categories. Anyway, one point six million is what we're asking for. There's a hundred million set aside for CTE. A big part of the CTE, who gets it, is they want, they're affording it first to schools that have ten percent concentrators or less. What a concentrator means is if you take two courses in a CTE pathway, or it's, the student becomes a concentrator. Well, right now, we have zero, because we've only offered one class in the other two pathways. So I feel like that means we have a good chance at being considered. Each district can get up to three million. It cannot be used for staff, salaries and benefits. So what it will be, would be used for is renovating the classrooms, all the hardware. Mike gave me a whole list of things, some I don't even know what they are. Tyler helped me get a whole list of how to renovate a classroom. So it would be the equipment, the supplies, the transportation to get our kids to and from these businesses, and also professional development for our staff, and to purchase some online, some of the cybersecurity stuff is online coursework too, so that's what it would go to, but it would not be salaries and benefits. So that's why it's one point six and not the full three.
Gotcha. Thank you.
That's a lot.
We'll see. Okay, next.
So you asked me, Bobby said, would you like me to break? So would you be there?
Yes, no, that's fine. I'd rather the kids not have to wait. Absolutely, I saw my name back to back. I thought I might be done with first right at seven, so there you go.
No, I appreciate that. Okay, so our next presentation is our school spotlight, and this is with Maine Elementary, so this is going to be a great listening experience for us. And so we're going to allow the families to come in, and then I will turn it over to our principal, John Webb, and John will discuss what we're going to be doing. Those Maine students look a little older than usual.
Hello, everybody. I have the very distinct honor to present to you today one of our wonderful organizations that we have at Maine. This is going to be a presentation from our bell choir. They recently did a performance for the holiday season at the Green, and you're going to hear one of the pieces they performed there. They're magnificent, and I hope you enjoy it as much as me. The director is Ms. Anita Campbell, and she's a tremendous music teacher, and she has prepared them, and they've been working really, really hard on this. So, girls, are you ready to come introduce the, yeah, go ahead and come on in?
Good evening, everybody. Thank you for letting us come out tonight, and without further ado...
Uh, we, um, we present Maine Elementary's bell choir playing Fan Fair.
So yes, wonderful, wonderful, wonderful job, boys and girls. So yeah, hopefully we can, we brought a little holiday cheer to your, to your meeting tonight. Thank you, boys and girls.
Thank you. I've never seen those things at Warren Bell. I've never seen those before. What are they called? No, but I mean, that thing of the spray, not the bells.
The long skinny ones?
Yeah, the long skinny, I've never seen that.
I don't think I have either.
I mean, I know what they're called, but I've never seen that before. That was really interesting. And the sound it made, yeah.
Yeah, it was a bell had kind of a different tone.
Yeah. That is hard with so many bells going on. I know. Yeah, I mean, that's amazing.
That sounded great.
It was.
All right, and our final presentation tonight, I'll ask Dr. Fiore to come back up to the podium.
Okay. A new thing this year, we have been receiving Student Success and Wellness and Disadvantaged Pupil Impact Funds for multiple years, and at the end of each year, we submit a report on, I know, how we use the money, what initiatives did we, you know, fulfill, and what, like, they even asked for a success story on this, so. So, but a new requirement this year is that we have a plan that we'll post on the website and that we present it in public, at a public meeting. So that's the purpose of this and why you haven't seen it before, just so you know. Something that was nice was we submit this information each year and Mr. Otten had put it in the paddle. But we were one of the schools recognized for innovation on ODE's website. It was interesting because I had to stumble upon that to know that was on there. I had no heads up, but I was like trying to, I keep thinking they're going to come out with a template for this plan. So I keep looking and I'm like, oh, wow, we're right there. So that is, that's good to be recognized for what we're using this money for. The purpose of this money is it's the fund initiatives to support wraparound services for Ohio students. Prioritizing their physical and mental health needs through strategic community partnerships. The amount that we get is for student success and wellness, we get 336,576. I took off the cents. I didn't think we needed to do that specifically. It was like 41, I think. And then for the disadvantaged people impact aid funds, we get about 47,791. So that is the money we get for that, for those two things. Partnerships that we have are with Green County Educational Service Center. What you're going to hear next is how we use the money, which is for social worker services and mental, school-based mental health. So TCN and Catalyst are the two that help us with school-based mental health as well as Green County ESC. So those are our partners that we have for the community agencies. The use of funds, our funds, we use them to remove barriers to learning by providing a multi-tiered system of support to meet the needs of the whole child. Some of the data when we started the process with the whole child was looking at needs assessment data, where are our needs? And back when we first decided to get social workers, that need came from, we didn't really have, like, we had some of the school-based mental health for tier three. And we had some tier one that we beeped up, but we didn't have really anything in the middle. So tier two is where our social workers come in. Something that they do is they use a lot of our data that we get from Panorama 312 and they pull groups, looking at, some of our needs are grit, self-efficacy. They also provide some individual support to kids, not necessarily formal counseling, but more short-term things. They also do prevention work, child safety matters, youth empowerment in our classrooms. So that was a need. And so when we got this money from the very beginning, we put it towards social workers. And we started out with a few and because of other monies, grants, we've grown. So social workers and school-based mental health. The state does say that 50% of your funds must be used for mental health services or physical healthcare or a combination of both. 100% of ours are, so. So another question, I just wanted you to see this because, you know, when it talks about multi-tiered system of support, if you were at the safety meeting, the tiers are, you know, something tier one is all kids, the 80% to 90%, that's more prevention, more of our social emotional learning curriculum. Classroom supports, PACs, PBIS, all the things that we do, child safety matters, all those things bullying prevention. And then tier two is where our social workers come in that we funded. We fund about three and a half of them with the monies plus some of the mental, the contracted services we get through Green County ESC. So then that's where our tier two comes in more, it's more specialized, more small group. It's about five to 10% of kids. And then the tier three is, it should, and it's never an exact number, but 1 to 5% should be more individual counseling services. So just to see some of the things we do for prevention intervention for social, emotional behavior, in case that pyramid is of interest to you. Another thing is the impact of funds. On the report that we do each year, it asks, it's interesting, how many kids are directly impacted? That's a tough one to figure out, you know? Our social workers do a really good job of kind of keeping some data on how many groups they have, how many kids they meet with. But there's no exact science there because they're busy all the time. So some of the things that, you know, when we report this, we kind of estimate, because like I said, it was three and a half social workers. We talked about directly impacted about, this was for last year's data, 360. And indirectly impacted about 1,800 because all of our kids are impacted in the schools they work because they do prevention for child safety matters is K5. So all the kids get some of them and then there's other programs that they do. So that's the number of the student impact. And then we also have to report like data, like what progress do we see in terms of like with these funds? So looking at the panorama data, I thought I'd share some of that. What this data is, is it looks at the skills, grit, self-efficacy and emotional regulation. And this percentage is the amount of students that reported positively about themselves. So it's a self-assessment. So their positive skills, now you think only 50%. That is, you know, concerning. However, when you compare like that 50% compared, you know, they compare you to other schools that take the survey. So where your percentile falls and our percentile for that one is lower, but for the other two, it is in the average range. Not that I want kids nationwide to only 50% report that they can regulate themselves. But I guess I want to say it's not as atypical as it might look from the percentage. And then our whole child team takes these and we set goals. So if you look grit in 2021, when we started this was 50%. The growth now, you know, it's 53, so we went up 3%. The problem with any of the data is it's a moving target because when three through five, the fifth graders go to six, then we get second graders to third. So we're really not comparing apples to oranges. So it is kind of hard to do if those statisticians over here are kind of like that. And then six through 12 was 50% to 54, so a 4% growth. And you can see self-efficacy went up two for three, five, and then six or 12 went up six. Emotional regulation went up 4% for three, five, and then 5% for six, 12. I'd say the area we made the most growth in, and we have been, is adult supportive relationships. And that's, we've really worked on trying to get every kid to have an adult in the building that they feel like they can go to no matter what. That's a question on the survey. So what we've done this year is we've identified all the kids that said they didn't. And there's one, do they have someone at home? Do they have someone at school? And do they have a friend? If a person puts no to all three of those, we need to, we need to find someone, right? A lot of them would put no at school, but they might have someone at home or a friend, right? Not that we don't want them to have someone at school, but so our social workers are playing a big part in that outreach and trying to connect with all of those kids. So we can make sure every kid has someone that they can talk to at school. And we are, we are pretty high percentage on that. We're in the 90s overall. So that's good. But if you see the size of our district, there's still a lot of kids that don't have someone, so. So that is the funds and how we use it, mental health, school-based mental health and social worker. And you know, we got the grant, so we've been able to expand on these services so that we have a social worker in every building. And we have mental health, school-based mental health more than we've ever had. Very proud of that. But it all started with these dollars and bringing in social workers, so. Any questions about this?
I guess I'll just comment, I mean, on the statistics, I know it's like hard numbers to make forward progress on. But it is impressive that every single one of these has increased. You know, my first thought was a few percent may be in the noise, but when you see a few percent every single place across the pattern, there's pretty clearly a positive trend here.
Something we are doing this year with self-efficacy, just so you know, is we are doing strength finders in three, five with our kids about things that aren't academic or athletic related, because every kid has a strength and we got to find it and we got to celebrate it. So that's something we're doing this year and we're also doing those use science aptitude. So they can learn like what their skill set is and maybe what that's, what path that's going to lead them on. So we're really trying to find ways to build confidence in kids. And then resiliency is something and grit we always work on, so.
Thank you, Bobby. And that concludes the presentation.
Okay, so we do have two speakers under questions or comments from the public. So I'm just going to tell you both now, even though you know it, but you've got three minutes, too much to speak. State your name and address. Should your comments require a response, somebody will get back to you. And with that, Claire Chinskey's first.
Hi, I'm Claire Chinskey. My address is 3121 Patsy Drive in Beaver Creek. I'm first going to speak tonight as a member of the Citizens for Beaver Creek City Schools Levy Committee. The, we've started recruitment for 2024. We're inviting the board to assist if they're interested in any way that's, you know, legally within state guidelines. We're looking to add at least 10 additional members to the levy committee. And if you're interested in doing that or know someone that's interested in doing that, please reach out to me or Diana Unger, the chair of the, of the committee to participate in forming of a new team. We'll have teams organized in structured committees to achieve our off-levee season strategy to improve social media reach as well as establish ongoing education in school funding fundamentals. The team recognizes this is a bigger ask and we need more time in the off-levee season to build the reach we need for future ballot measures. And then on a semi-related personal comment note, so, and it's, but it's also important to the levy committee's communication. And I was a little disappointed to see that the school, this updated time for the board meeting was not promoted on social media or in any kind of like news update on the website or in an email. The time was updated on the event's calendar after I brought it up at the last superintendent chat. But we all know that good communication is important and I'm hoping to see continued improvement in that area. Thank you.
Thank you. And Eddie Weaver.
Hi, I'm Eddie Weaver, 1112 Forest Drive in Beaver Creek.
Close.
Nothing, nothing makes Mr. Stein more nervous than the fact that I've been given a microphone and three minutes to speak.
Well, maybe we'll give you more time now.
So the thing I want to say today is a deep thank you to everybody here, but specifically to Mr. Stein. I know that this is one of the hardest things you've done. Sometimes the bravery is in being somewhere and being the person and being present. And I know that you weren't somebody who was ostentatious. You didn't do a whole lot of things that were showy or flashy. But you did a lot of behind the scenes work. And if you know Mr. Stein, you know that he is somebody who is very introverted. So everything about this, from going out campaigning door to door, knocking on random strangers' doors, asking them to please vote for somebody they had never seen before, to speaking in public, to doing the engagements, to coming here and then to, three months into this, having a very different audience character presented to him, is an incredible bravery that needs to be honored. And so I'm very grateful for all you did for future students in Beaver Creek, but I'm also grateful for everybody who is sitting up here. For Mr. Otten, for your steadfast leadership and for protecting families during that timeframe. Mr. Taylor for taking care of all the kids who are going through multiple career paths to success. Ms. Hunt for your shining innovation and ability to take care of folks. Ms. Regano for being kind and steadfast and thoughtful about your leadership and the way that you went about things in the last four years' challenges. Carl, or Mr. Fisher, Dr. Fisher, sorry, so many things. Thank you for innovating and coming with fresh ideas and new perspectives on things. And I definitely want to thank you more than anybody because you gave, you gave somebody else an outlet to hear about school finance and I'm so, so grateful. And to the cabinet, thank you for all that you did, all the professionalism, all the work, all the fantastic things that you offer to our students. We're going to have a student coming through very soon and I am very grateful for everything you've set up for him for success. The presentations, transportation, IT, all of that is incredible compared to other places I've been, I've lived all over the country. So I'm very grateful to each of you for all you've done. Thank you. Keep up the great work.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
See, that wasn't bad. Thank you. Okay, I'm going to need a motion a second to approve the minutes for the November 16, 2023 regular board of education meeting.
Second.
Any discussion? Please call the vote.
Mr. Taylor.
Yes.
Mr. Stein.
Yes.
Dr. Fisher.
Yes.
Mrs. Hunt.
Yes.
And Mrs. Regano.
Yes. And we're to items of board discussion.
Yes, we have four items this evening for board discussion. I'm going to turn the first one over to Mr. Darren Schwederman, talking about Starbase, a change that we feel is needed for those staff members there. So I'll turn it over to Darren.
Thank you, Mr. Otten, board. Glad to be back up here this evening. We have two items, board discussion that I'm going to go over with this evening. And the first one is related to vacation accrual for our district employees that are funded through Starbase. As you know, Beaver Creek City Schools and our board has been the financial agent for, the fiscal agent for the Wright Patterson Air Force Starbase program that serves students across the Dayton region. And as a fiscal agent, we employ the teachers that serve Starbase. And our board has been supportive of that. And one of the things that we know about Starbase is that their funding and their ability to program and provide those services is dependent on regular congressional action. And so it's a little unique because it doesn't follow the same cyclical pattern of employment that we have for our employees here or the fiscal year necessarily. And their funding is at a six-month interval. They have had some increased funding over the last several years that have allowed them to be innovative and create new programs and new ways of offering summer programs, getting out into schools rather than students just coming to the Starbase location, which is located on Spinning Road in Riverside. And as part of that, and the increased funding, they have expanded their staffing. And three of the staff members have moved from school period time, you know, like a general nine-month employment status to a 12-month employment status. And so what, what I have for you is a resolution to consider, not this evening, but for action at the January board meeting, that we would then create a pathway for those 12, those three employees who are 12-month employees or, and if there's more in the future, but any 12-month employees of Starbase to earn vacation time. Because they work through the summer, they work during some of the breaks. And it's only appropriate that a 12-month employee earns vacation time. So this lays out in a resolution format, the need for that, our values that we have about offering 12-month employees vacation and the fact that it's cyclical. We also have to have a mechanism. The rate at which they would earn vacation time and what happens to vacation time if they separate employment. Because of some of the uniqueness in the way Starbase is funded as a federal program, we had to set up some things that are outlined here in the resolution that are different than what we typically have. Our 12-month employees in our district can sometimes carry over vacation time. Or have vacation time paid out upon leaving employment with the school district. Because of the way they're funded, that is not, some of those pieces aren't possible with them. So we have the information that lays that out in here. What their maximum accrual would be, the rate at which they'll accrue and what happens if they separate employment with the district. So working with the Starbase, those three individuals there, as well as the program manager at Starbase, we were all in agreement that this would be something that they would appreciate our board moving on with in January. So if you have any questions, I can try to answer those for you. If you have any questions between now and when we bring it back for board action in January, you can let me know. I'd be happy to answer those questions. Okay, all right. Second item?
Yep.
The second item is also a resolution. As you know, we've expanded our efforts to secure substitutes in our school district to fill the needs when employees are absent. And over the last couple of years, we've expanded our training. And we've started paying our substitute employees for the training they participate in. We pay them, they attend the training and then we pay them once they've worked their actual first work day. So they don't get paid for the training unless they complete all the requirements, secure the licensure and then actually work a day in a classroom or work a day driving a bus or they work a day doing whatever job they're a substitute for us in. We have two trainings that we run for classified, one for classified employees and one for certified employees. And they're pretty identical with the, they're each three hours long. With the exception of one hour is different for teachers than for classified staff. And we have some staff who sub on what we call both sides is classified and certified. And I don't require them to come to all, both trainings full, but I ask them to come for the first hour if they're going to, of one or the other, if they're going to be on either side of the, of the substitute pool. And so in, because substitute teachers are paid at a daily rate. And so, because substitute teachers are paid at a daily rate, and hourly employees are paid at an hourly rate for subbing, we wanted to approach the Board and ask for approval, and again, this will be brought back to you in January, for a standard training rate. Rather than earning the same rate that they earn when they go in and work in the particular job they're subbing in, we have a stand, we're establishing a standard substitute rate. So, it doesn't matter which training you attend, it's a $16, the recommendation is a $16 per hour training rate for all substitutes regardless of your employment, classified or certified. And that just would require board action. And then, any adjustments in the future, we would bring to the Board at the same time we bring adjustments to the substitute hourly rate of pay, or the substitute teacher rate of pay. So, just working with the Treasurer's Office, just kind of feels like that is a little bit more of a structured approach to paying our substitutes for the training that they attend, rather than a daily rate or an hourly rate, since they can work on both sides. Any questions about that this evening? If you do between now and then, or have any thoughts that you want to share, please do reach out, and we'll bring this back on January the 6th. Thanks.
Thank you, Darren. Our next item for board discussion, this is always an exciting topic for kids and families, and so I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Mann, he's going to talk about our 24, 25, and 25, 26 school calendars. We're going to ask for board approval tonight on those.
Thank you, Mr. Otten, members of the Board. If you remember, last month, I gave you six calendars, three for the 24, 25 school year, and three for the 25, 26 school year. We did land on a semester ending before winter break, and so these calendars were in-captured, at least pretty darn close to what you had seen last month. And I don't have a whole lot to highlight, other than you'll see that the first day of school for 24, 25, for students, is going to be on the 14th of August, and then the last day of school would be on the 22nd of May. We're doing some staggered starts in there, and if you look at the legend on page two, it does define those staggered starts for students. The high school, middle school and high school will not be on a staggered start, so the 14th is for everybody, and then grades one through five will be the staggered start. On the next 25, 26 school year, we start the 18th of August, so a little later, with the way the calendar falls, and then we end on May 27th. So, this captures a lot of contractual language that we have, all the contractual language that we have, and it meets the requirements. We worked with the leadership of the BEA, and bringing this for, like Mr. Otten said, approval for tonight as well. Any questions on those two calendars? One last thing, Anika is working on a, what we push out to the community will look a little user-friendly, it won't be as detailed, because they don't care when staff report back, they care about the student day, so we'll have a student calendar that the community and parents see, and then Mr. Schwederman will work on a specific work calendar for staff. So, we hope to get this out tomorrow for our parents and students to see.
Let's have a quick question. Are these numbers down here the number of school days?
Number of school days based on the quarter. So, if you, like, October has eight and 14, the eight is part of first quarter.
Gotcha, thank you.
I've triple-checked them, but I mean, you're probably going to find a mistake.
I'm not counting them up, I'm just making sure I understood what the numbers were. I'm not going to check your work.
That's good. Mr. Stein probably will.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right, finally, our final item for board discussion, I'm going to ask Mr. Alexander to come up, talk about a resolution for gas services.
Thank you, Mr. Otten, and Board of Education. This is another item that we will ask for approval this evening. This will be authorizing the Southwestern Ohio Education Purchasing Council to issue a request for proposal for the purchase of competitive retail natural gas service from the lowest and best bidder submitted to the consortium. The RFP for competitive retail natural gas service will be commencing with the July 2025 billing cycle, and it will terminate no later than the end of June 2030 billing cycle. With approval tonight, the school district will participate in the upcoming RFP process and potentially execute a master service agreement with the lowest RFP bidder. So, we do have, this does not lock us in to going with the lowest bidder, we can still look for better pricing, but trends show that we tend to get very good pricing through our EPC, and most likely, we will go this route. Any questions? Thank you.
Thanks, Tyler. And that concludes items for board discussion.
Okay. So, under financial reports, I'm going to need a motion a second to approve the following. The November 2023 financial reports, fiscal year 24 amended certificate of estimated resources appropriations, November 2023 donated items, and Green County auditor amounts and rates resolution.
So moved.
Second?
Discussion.
So, real quickly, when you look at the financial report that I handed out, we're pretty much in line with where we should be at this time of year. We're, you know, we've recollected 46.5% of our receipts, and we've spent out 30, so we're over on our receipts, and we're under on our expenditures, always a good thing. That's what we want to see, so, I mean, it's, you know, it's kind of, it's not easy at this time of year, but it's pretty easy at this time of year, because I'm past the five-year forecast. I do, real quickly, though, I do want to talk about what's going on up at the state with the House and the Senate, and House Bill 187, and the 20 mil floor, what we talked about at the last board meeting. House Bill 187 has to replace that bill now. Chris is laughing already. Yeah, it's crazy.
I was going to say 20 mil floor.
I know.
I get all excited.
Oh, golly, I'm going to miss you. So, it's, so House Bill 187 replaced the bill that required the use of the three-year average for reevaluating property values, which would have affected our 20 mil floor. Now, it's been replaced with a temporary expansion of the homestead exemption for the next three years. Okay, so I'm going to tell you what the homestead exemption is. So, right now, the homestead exemption allows low-income senior citizens who have a modified adjusted gross income of less than $36,000, and who must be at least 65 years old, and also permanently and totally disabled Ohioans, to reduce their property tax bills by shielding some of the market value of their homes from taxation. This exemption, which takes the form of a credit on property tax bills, allows qualifying homeowners to exempt up to $25,000 of the market value of their homes from all local property taxes. So, for example, through the homestead exemption, a home with a market value of $100,000 is actually built at $75,000. So, that's where that comes in. A house that has a market value of $100,000, taxed 10 mils, would owe $350 annually in property taxes. That same home, if it, on the reduced market value of $75,000, same mileage rate of 10 mils, would owe $262.50. So, it's a savings of $37.50. That's the current program, and that current program, the state totally reimburses us at 100% to all local governments, not just schools, but the schools, counties, cities, townships, everybody. The state totally reimburses us for that homestead exemption. So, the Senate has introduced an expansion of this homestead exemption eligibility by allowing those who earn between $36,100 and $75,000 to qualify for a declining homestead exemption based on their income. This expanded homestead, this is where it gets a little different, will only be reimbursed 50% by the state, with only the school districts being required to absorb the remaining 50%. All other local governments will be held completely harmless. They still get the 100%, schools will not. We are the only one, the only local property government, and as you can tell how I feel about this.
Why is this?
You know, Joanne, I don't, I can't even begin to answer that. I wish I could, because I don't understand it either. So, I did go on to the Ohio Department of Taxation, looking to see if maybe I could figure out, you know, exactly how this is going to impact us. The most current figures from the Ohio Department of Taxation for this homestead exemption are from tax share 2019, and it's only by counting. In 2019, Green County had 11,290 exemption recipients who received an average reduction of $583 in property taxes. David Graham, because he sent out an email outlining this new proposal, and he said, I quote, "I have no way of predicting how many properties this will impact, so predicting the dollar impact to individual schools is impossible." And he's right, I mean, I've looked, I've tried.
That makes sense.
So, it's impossible.
It does, how are you going to know?
I did ask him how many residents from Beaver Creek are currently qualified for this program, and he said it's approximately 3,700. I do, I strongly support tax relief for seniors, which will make it easier for them to age and stay in their homes. I'm not against that. I do have concerns with the funding source for this relief. The state has the financial resources to fully fund this temporary expanded homestead exemption. The rainy day fund stands at a record $3.65 billion. The general revenue fund ending cash balance for this year is projected to be $1.73 billion, that's our carryover, and through October 24, or through October, the general fund tax revenues have exceeded estimates by $219 million. Again, I don't have a problem with this, I don't. I think it's a great thing to give that property tax relief. I just, I want them to fund it in another way. I want us to be like the other local governments, I want to be, you know, held at 100%. I don't think it's right that the school districts pick up 50% of this, so, that's...
I mean, I totally agree that senior citizens should get this.
Oh, absolutely.
I mean, I think it's there, I think it's a good thing.
Yes, absolutely.
But, for the schools, no other entity, we're the only ones that have to pay the 50%. This is wrong.
And it leaves us in a position where we have to try to scramble to figure out, how do we make our budget work?
That's what I was just going to say.
Sorry.
No, no, go ahead, continue, go.
It is frustrating. Well, my follow-up was just going to be, you know, how's our relationship with Bob Hackett, a representative in the Senate? Do we talk to his office about how these kinds of programs would affect our schools? Is he responsive to those discussions?
I do receive back emails from Mr. Lampton and Mr. Hackett. The one who I don't hear back from is Mr. Dean, but they do, they respond back to me, and they say, "Thank you for your input, thank you for helping us to understand what this means for Beaver Creek City School District." So, yes, they do respond, and I think they do take it under consideration without a doubt, so, yeah, absolutely.
Thank you for doing that, that's important, that they understand how it affects us.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, I think every district needs to tell their story, whenever they can, about everything that gets brought, you know, that's going to affect a school district, so, yeah.
Because then it's, how do we arrange our funds? That's how I look at it.
Yeah.
Where's the money coming from?
We have to tax it, so we get stuck in the position of looking like the bad guys.
So, yeah. Is there any other questions, any other comments on that one? The Green County auditor amounts and rates resolution, that is being brought to you tonight because of the replacement permanent improvement tax, permanent improvement levy that was put on the November ballot. He's put the new dollar amount on there. Now, we will not collect that whole dollar amount, because actually, that starts in January, at least not for this fiscal year, and then also, he also added the substitute levy, so, that's the only reason why that is on here at this point. So, he just updated his numbers, so, all right.
Thanks for the update.
You are so welcome.
Oh, please call the vote.
All right. Mr. Stein?
Yes.
Dr. Fisher?
Yes.
Mrs. Hunt?
Yes.
Mrs. Regano?
Yes.
And Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, new business, there's Section 1 and 2. So, I'm going to need a motion and a second to prove the items under Section 1. So, that's the employment salary changes, leaves of absence, terminations. Approval of NEOLAs policy updates, first reading was November 16, 2023. Approval of resolution of appointment to Green County Career Center Board of Education. Approval of school year calendars for the 2024, 25, and 2025, 26. Approval of resolution authorizing the purchase of competitive retail natural gas service, and the approval of the release of all Board members' representatives from standing committees.
So moved.
Any discussion?
Yes, I have a couple items to cover here. I'll start with D. We received some new guidance from the state, I want to let the Board know that we will discuss this in January, our committees, that's where we usually do that. However, we will get into those details a little more than we have in the past, and we may not have all those committees, and we may call them something different. So, I will fill you in more on that information when we get there in January. Item C is the Green County Career Center seat, and we brought that before the Board last month. Mr. Taylor has volunteered to serve in that capacity. However, what I would like to do is, I'd like to read the resolution, because I've noticed that the resolution in the book is the standing resolution, it is not one that has the correct information in it. So, I'd like to read that so that we get it in the minutes correct, and then we will use the one that should have been in here. So, I'll go ahead and read resolution of appointment to Green County Career Center Board of Education. Number 1, whereas Green County Career Center, GCCC, Joint Vocational School District, JVSD, has a vacancy on its board, whereas Beaver Creek City School District is a member of GCCC, and is authorized by the GCCC plan on file with the State Board of Education to appoint an individual appointee to fill the vacancy. Whereas Beaver Creek City School District has reviewed the statutory requirements for making the appointment, including those in Ohio Vice Code 3311.19 as amended, and its requirements, the Joint Vocational School District, JVSD, Board members have experienced as chief executive officers, chief financial officers, human resource managers, or other business, industry, or career counseling professionals who are qualified to discuss the labor needs of the region with respect to the regional economy, and the requirement that JVSD Board members represent employers in the region served by the Green County Career Center, and be qualified to consider the state's workforce needs with an understanding of the skills, training, and education needed for current and future employment opportunities in the state, and the requirement that JVSD Board members be selected based on their diversity of the employers in the territory served by Beaver Creek High School. Whereas Beaver Creek City Schools has performed and documented its due diligence in considering the appointees' qualifications, including the appointees' qualifications to meet the legal requirements served. Whereas the Board of Beaver Creek City School District is party to a memorandum of understanding, an MOU, with GCCC and the other school districts that make up the JVSD, and this appointment is in keeping with the terms of the MOU. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Beaver Creek City School District appoints Mr. Gene Taylor to the Green County Career Center Joint Vocational School District Board of Education for a three-year term of office to commence on January 1, 2024, and expire on December 31, 2026. And that's all I have to share, that has a lot, sorry, I need to drink some water there.
Any other discussion? Okay, please call the vote.
Dr. Fisher?
Yes.
Mrs. Hunt?
Yes.
Mrs. Regano?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
And Mr. Stein?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, Section 2 does not require a vote, but we need to elect a president pro temp to serve from January 1, 2024, until the Board's annual organizational meeting.
I'd like to nominate, oh, sorry. I'd like to nominate Joanne Regano.
Does I need a second?
Doesn't I need a second, but thank you.
Okay.
Okay, and so, that's done. Thank you. And now, we have the Superintendent's report.
Yes, so tonight, we have a Board Member recognition, so I'd like to...
Keep all the attention.
Yes.
Like this child.
Mine, one down here first. So, Mr. Stein, one of the traditions that we started when I came here, was when we had Board members step off the Board or finish their term. We want to give them a jersey that represents their time on the Board. So, Mr. Stein, you just... that represents their time on the board. So, Mr. Stein, you just... So, Mr. Stein has served four years with Beaver Creek City School District Board, and I have to tell you a story about this jersey. So, I ended up calling Mr. Pompous, because that's where we get our jerseys from. And when I called Brad, Brad said, "All right." I go, "I need a jersey with the number 4 on it." So, Brad says, "That's fine. We'll start looking." About a week and a half passes by. I said, "Ray, where are we at with the jersey?" And Brad's like, "I gotta tell you, we're still looking for a 4." And so, Brad keeps looking through it. He says, "All right, I found a 4," and he brings it over to us. And he starts, we look at it, and he says, "I gotta be really honest with you." And he had marks all over it. It's got, like, stitching where... And I said, "You know what? That's actually probably pretty reflective of the four years."
Oh!
There are battle wounds on that jersey. Because Mr. Pompous said, "If you want, we'll order him a brand-new jersey." And I, "If you want a brand-new one, we can get you a brand-new one." This one has been through the wringer.
So appropriate.
I just, I want to say a little bit about Chris. So, when Chris came onto the board, I always find it very interesting. I've been a superintendent now for 13 years, and I always find it interesting when you have a new board member. Because a new board member comes on, and you're unsure of what is their agenda, what do they want to do, what do they want to accomplish, what do they know, what do they don't, what are the items that they don't know. Chris came in with his eyes wide open, and the one thing that I could tell right from the beginning was, his focus was about kids. It was about our district. It was about what can we do to make our school district better. Chris was also, when we went through COVID, he was one of those individuals that was not afraid to stand up for what he believed in. And he asked great questions. And I think in one of our board meetings, I actually said, "Mr. Stein, your questions have been very difficult tonight, but they were perfect. They are exactly what a board member needs to do, because he's asking questions that others want to have answers to." So, Chris, what I want to say to you is, you can go to bed tonight, and on January 1, when your term is officially over, know that you have made our district significantly better. And I mean that full-heartedly. You've been an outstanding board member. I've worked with a lot of board members over the years, and I am very thankful that you stepped up and taken on the role. And I will miss you. I will miss you greatly. Our cabinet will miss you greatly. But the best part about it is you're still a member of the district. And I look forward to seeing you around the district. I look forward to really seeing you at events and seeing Miles and people. I hope they don't call you for discipline.
Look at Eddie. Look at Eddie shaking his head. Okay.
But I just want to say thank you, because you made my job. And you truly made our district better. Thank you. Thank you.
You like it with speech?
You can have as much time as you want.
I'll wait till board member...
Okay. Okay. So, we're into announcements. So, December 21 is the end of the quarter and early dismissal. December 22, no school for students, but it's a staff work day. December 25 through January 5 of 2024, it's winter break, no school. December 25, 26 of 2023, January 1 of 2024, all offices are closed. January 6, 2024, is the Board of Education Annual Organizational Meeting. That begins at 8:30. The tax budget meeting, hearing meeting, begins at 8:45, and the regular Board of Education meeting begins at 9:00 a.m. right here in this room. And that's it. So, I'm gonna start with Dr. Fisher.
All right.
I'm gonna let you go last. How's that? Give it to him.
I will echo my thanks to Mr. Stein for his commitment to our district, and I will also miss having your insights and perspectives. You really, I would agree, just as a member, I have appreciated your willingness to help us all sort through problems and see them from your perspective as well. The only other issue on my list of topics I wanted to discuss tonight was concern over the recent passage of House Bill 68 by the Senate, which is a bill that will make it harder for us to run inclusive athletic programs. Not a lot harder, because there's only about 12 students in the entire state of Ohio over the last five years who identify as transgender and have sought to participate in female athletic programs, in girls' sports. But it hurts my heart to think of Beaver Creek as being a place that will tell a student who is already marginalized and disadvantaged and somewhat looked down on by society that they can't participate. And so, we'll see what happens with this legislation, whether it gets signed by the governor or not. But I just wanted to share that I'm deeply concerned about how it will affect us, and if it does pass, I'd like to hear what we can do to try to hold on to an inclusive program and to try to never be a school that tells a student that they're not welcome. And that's all I've got.
Thank you. Mrs. Hunt?
Just real quick, I've got the opportunity to go to the show choir this past weekend. I did an excellent job. My niece is now part of that program, so I have an extra, an extra added interest in it. But it's always cool to see our kids get out there and perform. And I know the time they've put in, but it's early in the season, and it was just amazing. So, I can't wait to see how it progresses. I wanted to say thank you to Jeff Madden. Some of you may know, recently, so I'm involved with an organization called Shoes for the Shoeless in the area, which provides shoes and socks to kids in the area who do not have them or their parents can't provide them. And we got an 11th-hour call. I got the call because I knew of my association with the district and said, "We have an opportunity. Greene County FOP kind of hosts this event, and can we send over some of our kids who are truly in need and that we could help?" And it was like a six-days' notice, and I thought, "Oh, I don't know how that's gonna go, but I'll call Jeff and see." And Jeff said, "Well, I'm never gonna just say no." So, he made it happen. I mean, he coordinated staff, students at five different elementary schools, transportation, which is a feat in and among itself, to allow, I think we had about 50 kids who may, that may be their only person's kids. So, that organization needs a lot to meet personally. But I just, watching those kids get to enjoy that experience, and there was one student with special needs who clearly needed, needed to be there. And it was just a really neat experience, and I got to serve that day with that. But I just wanted to thank you for moving heaven and earth to make that happen, because I know that wasn't an easy task in December with six-days' notice and coordinating all of that. So, thank you. I know the families appreciate it as well. I want to thank our staff for their hard work and wish them all a wonderful winter break. I know they've got five more days to tough it out through, or I guess, six more days. But wish our staff and families a great winter break. Mr. Stein, I, as you know, I've been begging you to stay since you said you weren't going to continue on the board. I just, I want to say that I think all of us as new board members, I think come on thinking we know a lot, and we figure out really quickly that we know very little. And so, I just wanted to say I appreciate how you came on, and you were always listening first, always very respectful of other people's opinions, no matter how heated the topic was. I think you brought very thoughtful insight into every conversation. It was never flippant comments. It was always things that you really spent a lot of time researching and just really spoke on things that mattered. And I appreciate that you always put kids first. I appreciate that you could translate financial information to me, because that is not my gift. So, all the help you can give joy and help in explaining to me is great. But most of all, I appreciate that I've gained a friend and...
Mr. Taylor?
That's me.
That's you.
Okay, so, you know, here we are at this time of year with all the wonderful seasonal programs that go on in our schools. And I've got to, I've had the luck to witness several of those, everything from the show choir. It's amazing. You see the joy, the unabashed joy that kids have in doing those presentations. It's just, it's just amazing. So, concerning the high school students that spoke with us, what a great opportunity to have students have that level of engagement in front of the board, in front of the community, because their lives are very important to them, and what their wants, needs, loves, all those kind of things need to be addressed. And having a spokesman for the high school students, being high school students, is really great. And let's see, Greene County Career Center sign-up is underway. If it turns out the way it did last year, we're going to have way too many kids sign up than we actually have room for. So...
That's a good problem.
What's that?
It's a good problem, but it's too bad you don't have the space.
It's a good problem that you have the desire of kids to be there. It's a bad problem, because it can't be served.
Can't fill them, yeah.
Cannot be served. We are opening up a new lab next year, heating, ventilating, ventilation, and air conditioning. So, we'll see how that works out, and there is a lot of need in our area for those, for those kinds of things. Wish everybody a great holiday and a happy time. As is that. Mrs. Regano?
Okay, me. So, I first want, I want to reiterate, all the show choir, the band concerts, everything is amazing. And I don't know if people realize, you know, you're sitting there, and the talent just blows your mind. But you have to realize the work these kids and teachers put into this. It just doesn't happen. They make it look so easy, but the work behind it, like, just the show choir, I mean, they're there tonight, what, four or five hours? It's unbelievable what they have to put out. So, I want to thank our kids personally for all they do to make our district shine, whether it's athletics, or whether it's, you know, show choir, any music program. They make Beaver Creek schools look good. They really do. And so do our staff, because it takes leaders to help our kids. So, I want to thank them. Then, our student council, their annual, which started this year, tradition of lighting that tree. I've got to tell you, it was, the show choir sang that night. And Charlie said, we're standing there. And Charlie said, "You know what? This looks like a Hallmark movie without the snow." But, because, you know, but it was. It was just a beautiful scene. Parents were excited. Kids were singing. Charlie makes that comment, like, "Because I watch all the Hallmark. It could be in, because I've got to memorize it." But I'm just, but he was right. It did. It was, they were amazing that night. And that's a great tradition that our kids are starting. So, I want to wish our staff and everyone a wonderful holiday break, whether they're traveling, whatever. Be safe. And Mr. Stein, you are gonna be missed. So, I'm not gonna make it. Yes. I've loved our conversations. I've appreciated them. I love what you stand for. I mean, it was tough during COVID, but you never gave up. You were there, and you stuck to what you believed in, and that was important. And our kids and parents knew how much you loved them and cared about them. And that's what was so important. You truly love our kids, and you love our district, and you gave 200%, and it will never, ever be forgotten. We love you. We're gonna miss you. But you're not gonna be gone, because I'm gonna see that little redheaded kid running around the district. And we're gonna be calling you and saying, "What a wonderful child you have." Look, there you go. It's true. You know what I mean? Two great parents. What do you want? But seriously, thank you for everything you've done for us. And you're not going far.
I am not.
We're gonna be bugging you. So, there you go. And with that, I'm gonna need...
Hold on.
Oh, sorry.
I know, you're supposed to go in last.
No, that's right. I'm so, you're right. I wasn't, I did, was gonna, so I'm so excited. It's like, and you are the last one to go.
I should just let you close it out.
No, I'm not. Thank you. Because I'm so, I'm ready to cry, and I'm like, yeah, you are. I am gonna let you go last. It wasn't gonna be me.
Well, thank you. I'll first say that I, I'm always amazed when we have students come and speak to us, because when I was a student, even in high school, I could not speak in front of anybody. And today, it's still terrifying to be sitting right here even and speaking to a room of people. So, I'm always amazed at, you know, how great of speakers they are. And then, Mr. Ashley today, he was like, "I'm terrible at public speaking." And he gives this wonderful retirement speech. It's just like, okay. So, I will try, but I am not good at this. So, I guess my parting words would be, when I was running for the board, I, just like you said, Mrs. Hunt, I thought I knew, I thought I knew it all. Well, I shouldn't say knew it all, but I thought I knew stuff. And one of those things, I'll just be honest, is, it's like, gosh, that Beaver Creek City School sure does ask for a lot of money all the time. And like, there's gotta be something, you know, to do better than what they're doing, was my thought. And then, I get on the board, and I meet all the wonderful people in this room and see what all the wonderful people in this room are doing. And my parting words would be, I wish everybody could see behind the scenes of what our amazing administrative team is doing to make the dollars stretch the way that they do. Because from the outside, absolutely, it looks like they don't know how to spend their mon, or, I guess I'll put it that way, they don't know how to spend their money. But if you could see what I could see is room, just roomful, rooms full of people putting their heads together to think out of the box and think creatively of, the state isn't a great partner with us as far as funding. So, we unfortunately have to fund ourselves. The community has to basically fund ourselves and the schools. And just that, I wish everyone could see just what great stewards we have in this district, making sure that that, that the community's money is being spent in the best way possible. I wished I could have figured it out, you know, how we didn't have to be on the ballot all the time. But it's just the nature of Ohio, and especially for me, coming from a state where you don't vote to fund your schools. There's no voting on that. So, coming to Ohio and having to experience that here was like, this is crazy. But there must be some reason why we're doing it, and why it's, you know, being left up to the voters. And, you know, I'm gonna figure out the reason. We just don't get funded the way that we should get funded. The state says that we can educate students for 18,000, I mean, sorry, 8,000 a student? Yeah, no. Can't do that. So, not only are we having to make up the difference of what the state isn't funding us, but also make up the difference of what they think inadequate education is. And it's a challenge. But I'm grateful for the leadership team here, the administrative team here, that they're doing what they're doing to make that work. And I probably could have said that better. I don't know. But I hope, I hope that came across the way that I meant it. I've enjoyed working with all of you, getting to know all of you. And yes, I will not be gone. I'll still be around.
Just a phone call away.
Yeah. Joy is always already promised, that she'll keep bugging me. So...
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, so this isn't goodbye, but those are my parting words.
Thank you. Thank you. Thanks. Okay. Okay, so, I'm gonna need a motion and a second to take us into Executive Session 4, the Appointment, Employment, Dismissal, Discipline, Promotion, Demotion, or Compensation of Public Employees, Revise Code 121.22G1, and the Purchase or Sale of Real Estate, Code 121.22G2.
Second.
Okay, call the vote.
Mr. Taylor? Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Stein?
Yes.
Dr. Fisher?
Yes.
Mrs. Hunt?
Yes.
And Mrs. Rigano?
Yes.